All right, good evening, everyone. And welcome to tonight's Board of Ed meeting. The date is Tuesday, October 8th, 2019. And I really would appreciate if you turn off your cell phones as this meeting is being recorded. Ellen, can you please do our roll call?
Thank you, Chairperson Granato. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Cassio?
Present.
Mrs. Evans?
Here.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Here.
Mr. Healy? Ms. McCurdy?
Here.
Mr. Morris? Mrs. Paradise?
Present.
Vice Chairperson, Mr. Hill?
Here.
Chairperson, Mrs. Granato?
Present.
And Weathersfield High School Student Representative, Mr. Isaac Santos?
Here.
All present.
Okay, thank you. And we have some guests, staff, and students, and they're going to come up and lead us in the pledge allegiance, and they're from Emerson Williams School. Come on up. You ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. You were excellent at that. And Mr. Emmett, we then have Emerson Williams giving a presentation this evening.
We certainly do. We have a special group of people here this evening, some phonics scientists that are going to be talking with you about phonics instruction. Yes, you know who you are. So, come on up, folks.
Good evening. I'm Brendan McLaughlin. I serve as Reading and Language Arts Consultant at Emerson Williams School. And I'm here with my colleagues. Pam Jones is a first grade teacher at Emerson. Ms. Jen Hammer serves as a Curriculum Specialist in the area of literacy, both for our school and for web school. And Nicole Yatruces, who's a kindergarten teacher at our school. And we wanted to share with you, since our district's adoption of the Columbia Units of Study in Phonics, since the adoption of that program in kindergarten in grade one last year, and now implementation of it in grade two as well, we wanted to share with you some of the joys of teaching and learning in this program. But to begin, we thought we would speak to the question of what is phonics? So, the best, the clearest definition that I have is this. Phonics is the relationship between the letters of written language and the sound of spoken language. So, that, it follows then that children's reading and their writing development is dependent on their understanding of the alphabetic principle, so that idea that letters and letter patterns represent the sound of spoken language. So, you can see on the screen, there's an example. And this is a typical kindergartner. You can see on the left side, at the very beginning of kindergarten this year, and then just four weeks later. And the transformation from simply drawing pictures to using letters, but not just letters, but we've got beginning and ending consonants, we've even got some vowels in there, that transformation is not accidental. That, that change in, in writing ability is illustrative of, of an excellent program and high-quality instruction. So, it's a very powerful culmination.
So, one of the things that we think is really important are the principles that are foundational to this curriculum. And the first one is that this curriculum is based on a variety of research. Because, because it comes out of Columbia and the Teachers College Reading and Writing Project, they are a tremendous think-take. They essentially synthesize the research that other people have done, and they've taken the best parts of other phonics programs and essentially created their own. The other hallmark of the program is that it is strategy-based. So, rather than kids memorizing rules, they're really learning how to study words and patterns. So, essentially, instead of just being knowledgeable about how one word works, they learn how to become knowledgeable about how many words work. It's extremely efficient. Our phonics workshops in our K-2 classrooms are meant to be done in 20 minutes. And that's not to say that the instruction is happening quickly and not well. It's meant to say that they recognize that all of the other components of balanced literacy, readers workshop, writers workshop, shared writing, shared reading, are all tremendously important, and they value that, they want to ensure that a teacher has time for all of those other things. The biggest part is that we need to ensure that it's transferable. If students are not applying what they're learning in phonics to their reading and writing, then it's all for naught. So, Teachers College ensures that there are opportunities, both embedded in the readers' workshop and the writers' workshop, to apply everything that they're learning in phonics. And most importantly, for our kids, it's extremely engaging. Every unit has a storyline. They're becoming superheroes. They're becoming word scientists. They're becoming word detectives. Every lesson, almost every day, has some type of game, or chant, or song. And I think the most engaging part is that each grade level has a stuffed animal mascot that serves as kind of a co-teacher alongside the classroom teacher. And in kindergarten?
We have Mabel, the elephant.
And in grade one?
Rashid.
And in grade two, it's a dragon named Gus.
Who's that big kid?
And just adding on to that, I use Mabel in my kindergarten classroom, and my students love her so much that last year she actually got a birthday crown for her birthday. We don't know when her birthday is, but she got a birthday crown, so she's very loved, and it's such a big part of our curriculum, and they really do enjoy doing phonics. And so, for how does the phonics workshop go, it's very similar to how the readers' workshop and writers' workshop units are. There's a mini lesson that's about six to eight minutes. There's a connection to really get the students engaged in what the lesson is and activate their prior knowledge. There's a teach, which is very explicit, so the student knows what they are learning. There is then an active engagement, which is when the students get support in what they're learning, a new skill. And then there's a link, which helps the student think about the transference and how it applies to readers' and writers' workshop. And probably the most important part of that is the rug time. Students can be with partners or with rug clubs, which is about five or six students, and they're practicing what they are learning, and it's extremely hands-on. They're either sorting pictures, they're writing on whiteboards, they're talking with each other and interacting, which is great. And the whole time, the teacher is coaching the student and also formatively assessing the student as well. And at the end of the lesson, there's a whole group debrief on the work and a reminder of the skills and strategies. And there's some really great anchor charts that the students can always refer to during other parts of the day. And there's a lot of really playful activities that also end the lesson called extensions, which don't have to be done right with the phonics workshop, but before we're going to recess, or we're going to lunch, or the end of the day, those can also be done, and they're very engaging and just get the students remembering the skills that they've learned. And we have Pam Jones going to talk about the video that she made with her class.
Sure. So, our first grade unit begins with a review of the kindergarten skills. So, the kids really are just reviewing the, the consonants, including the hard and soft C and G. Like, a hard C would be like the beginning of the word cat. A soft G would be like the beginning of the word city. They're reviewing the vowels, the long and short vowels. They're reviewing blends and digraphs, and the way they do it is really cool. They do a fun little name study. And so, I have this video. We decided to invite in a special guest, who came into our classroom, and we studied his name. You can probably see who the guest is, but you'll see him shortly when we start the video. And so, this is just a quick little snippet of what phonics would kind of look like. But this was the end of our name review study, so I hope you enjoy and learn a little bit about phonics. Emmett, we have been learning how to look at names and really study them. We, we know that, we don't just look at the name and read it. We need to look at the name and really look at the letters in the name, using everything that we've learned from kindergarten and even stuff that we've learned so far in first grade to really study a name. And it's going to help us in the long run to be able to study words and learn how to spell, be better spellers. Right, phonics professors?
Yeah!
Okay, so, what we want to do right now is we would like to study your name, and then we would like to add your name to our wall of name things.
Hi, phonics professor.
You!
So, first, read it.
Mister Emmett.
Then, crack the syllables.
Mister Emmett.
Snap the syllables.
Mister Emmett.
Then, you snap the syllables.
Mister Emmett.
Name the letters.
M, R, S, T, P, 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 R.
Awesome. Thank you, Professor Lidoos. Have a seat. And now, we want to just really study this word. Let's look at it carefully. What do you notice, Hunter?
It has double on each letter, and E.
Ooh, what double, what letters are double in Emmett?
E, N, and T.
Wow. What do you notice, Ava?
Um, two, and the middle is a C.
What do you notice, Margaret?
His name is from a movie.
What do you notice, Charlotte?
There's a word, me.
Ooh. What do you notice, Adna?
How about there's a two T's?
And can we think about the names on our, on our word wall? And can you tell me how, how a name on a word wall is similar to Mr. Emmett's name? Ooh. Oh, yeah, I know. What do you notice, Medina?
Like, in my name, he has at the beginning an M, and I have a beginning at the M.
And what kind of an M is that?
A B C.
Ooh. What do you notice, Sophia?
Um, I don't have a T in my name.
And, and Mr. Emmett does. What do you notice, Charlotte?
Um, if you just switch the E at the end, and then I have two E, two Ts, and I have an E at the end of my name, my name too.
Wow, you all are really studying this name very well. Does anyone see anything that's different in Mr. Emmett's name compared to the names on our word wall? Ooh. What do you see, Grace?
My name starts with a G, and his starts with an E.
Hmm, I see that too. What do you see, Charlotte?
Um, that, um, he has an M, and I do not have an M.
Hmm. What do you see, Hunter?
He has a vowel, I mean, a vowel at the end of his name, and Charlotte doesn't.
And Charlotte doesn't. What's that, you have a Charlotte? Hmm. Now, let's take our blends and digraphs, and let's see if we can make our name a little silly. Let's try FL. You ready? Forista, Glennet. Oh, my heart. Who has one you'd like to try? Oh, let's listen to, Margaret, what do you have?
GL.
Huh?
GL.
GL, you ready for GL? What would it be, boys and girls? Forista, Glennet. Oh. Let's try one with Sophia. What do you have?
WH.
WH, are you ready? What would it be?
Swister, Glennet.
I like that.
I love the G.
I love the G. I'm going to sing that. Let's try, come on, girls. Corinne, what do you have?
SW.
SW. Ooh, here we go, boys and girls.
Swister, Glennet.
I love that. Walking over, she's looking for the place, and she put it under the?
E.
Because E is for?
Emmett.
One more time, boys and girls. Can we say goodbye with a committee cheer?
Goodbye!
Awesome.
Have a good afternoon.
Oh, that was great. That was great. Any questions? Yeah, does anyone have a que, I have one question I'd like to ask. We had kindergarten up there, the first day of school, I think it was, and then four weeks later. What are the expectations as they come into kindergarten? Should they be knowing, because I sound like a parent, a grandparent, should they know their sounds, their letters and their sounds? Is that what we're expecting of them?
That's not what we're expecting of them. Usually, in the beginning of kindergarten, they're just drawing a picture, or maybe they're doing, like, if it's the word me that they're drawing, they could do the M for me. But as the phonics gets a little bit more intensive, they're really able to start hearing all those sounds and putting them into their writing. But at the beginning of kindergarten, there is definitely not an expectation for them to know all their letters and sounds.
Okay, great. Evan?
Just a question, in regarding, in regards to phonics beyond kindergarten, first, second grade, is there like a transition almost where they, it's not that they, obviously, they build upon what they've learned, where kind of spelling becomes more important and that kind of thing?
So, it used to be that we thought of the primary, or some people, it's never been my line of thinking, but for, for some time, people would think in terms of the primary grades as being the grades when you learned, and I know your question is about spelling, but by way of background, the primary grades as being the time when kids are learning to read, and then after that, they're reading to learn. So, similarly, with the writing processes, it followed a similar line of thinking. But with the approach that we're taking now, we're really building in that groundwork so the kids are freer earlier to be able to focus on meaning and not use up all their energy on cracking the code, either for reading or for writing. So, then, as they have this really strong foundation, they can do deeper word work earlier and be freer for their expression. So, once kids sit in word study and in spelling, is our program now for grades three and higher. It was our primary program as well, but the TC phonics has now replaced that. And so, as our kids now in second grade also have this groundwork, they're in an even stronger position than they were before.
Right.
And freer also to delve into deeper vocabulary work.
Yeah, and just more, obviously, more emphasis on comprehension as opposed to worrying about that I got these four words correctly.
Exactly. So, you'll notice there's, there's a lot of, you'll notice there's a lot of noticing. So, rather than getting a bunch of rules in kids' bones and then expecting them to apply them, early on, we're developing the principle of, what do you notice? What else do you notice? Because in the English language, for all of the rules, there are myriad exceptions. So, by just teaching the rules, then we have the problem of, well, when do the exceptions apply, and when do they not apply? And just holding all of those rules and exceptions becomes a whole study unto itself. So, what we really want is for the kids to be flexible and nimble early on about what they're noticing. And the, the real groundwork of this is, I think any neuroscientist would speak to this, but I believe it was in Patricia Cunningham's work where she was quoted saying, "The mind is a natural pattern seeker." So, what we're trying to do with the kids' reading and writing is to get them to notice what's alike about these words, what's different, what applies here in this context. In the earlier, we can develop that kind of patterned thinking. We're also, at the same time, developing kids' ability to think critically, not just for those reading, writing tasks, but then also more quickly and easily into the depth of what they're reading and writing about. So, while we're speaking here specifically about phonics, it winds up opening the pathway for much deeper, much more critical work all across our curriculum.
It's funny, as a, as a parent, you obviously, my, my children come home, and if they, they don't, like, they do not care if they misspell a word. They just, you know, I'm immediately, that's the first thing I would point to, because that's how I was taught, and that's the way my brain is now triggered. They do not think that way at all. They just keep going and then see where the story takes them.
Yeah, and, and that's part of what we're developing early on. So, we're not expecting kids that, you know, depending on, on the stage of their development, either by their grade level or their own personal development, we're expecting them to apply what they've learned. And we're getting better and better and better all the time, it holding them to account to what they have learned, and then gradually raising the bar, and then continuing to hold them account. So, there's got to be a period of learning and, and practice and approximation. So, when your, when your children are really little, for example, and they're just learning to speak, they'll, they'll say mommy, or daddy, or in the very beginning, it doesn't sound anybody else like that. But to those who love these beautiful little babies, they're like, oh, my gosh, yeah, that was definitely mommy, or that was, that was definitely dad, you know, whatever it was. And then the child picks up on that, and then begins every time thereafter to ever more closely approximate those real words. So, that very same principle applies to kids' spelling and writing and all of their work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else with a question, John?
Yes, first of all, thank you. Great presentation. I appreciate that. How long has this particular program been working at Emerson Williams?
So, we adopted the program across district for kindergarten and first grade last year. And they were still in the process of writing the grade-two curriculum, so the grade-two curriculum came on board this year. So, we're kind of in our second year of partial implementation. Next year, K-2 across the board.
So, you've seen some transition with last year's kindergarten to this year's first grade?
Yes. Pam, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, definitely. I see lots of growth. The kids now, like I said, what you saw on there with them knowing their vowels, knowing what a blend and digraph is, they didn't know that coming into first grade in years past. Knowing the different vowel sounds, and even the different, the C and G, they blew me away when they say, well, that's a soft C, or that's a hard G. So, yes, I definitely see a difference. Also, in their writing, their writing and their spelling, I definitely see an improvement this year than in years past. And, and I got to believe it's from the, the phonics program.
Good. All right. And then I have one more question. To the students, are you enjoying it?
You can speak now.
So, it's a lot of fun, learning a lot of good things? All right, keep up the good work. You're on TV.
Great. Anyone else with a question? Kelly?
Question. Thank you so much. I thought the video was awesome. I have a couple little ones, so I have a quick question. So, I know that it's being rolled out for second grade, but in terms of maybe a third grader, second grader that need a little extra help, is it still being reinforced by, like, the reading specialists at that level? Are you going to dive in, or is it just?
Are you talking about, like, in the upper grades?
Yeah.
So, one of the beauties of the curriculum is that there are not just units of study for the particular grade level, but each unit or each grade-level kit comes with a small group book, which has 75 to 80 different small groups that are specifically targeted to different phonics principles or different phonics elements. And what we've done is we've ensured that our special education teachers, even our third and fourth grade teachers who may have kids that have kind of missed this piece, they're able to get pieces of it through those small groups.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Great. Good question. Anyone else? I just, I want to thank you too, on behalf of the board. And, and teaching all those years too, I love teaching phonics. Of course, then you come to the word fatigue. And the kids would just look at you, and I say, just say fatigue. It works beautifully. But our English language is very challenging, so thank you very much for giving them a tool to learn it. Thank you.
Thank you for your expertise. Students, thank you very much. And parents, thank you. Well done.
And now, before the children go, I think I'd like them to stand. Can Hunter Hernandez, are you here? You want to stand? And Lena Demonti? Joey Demonti? That name sounds familiar. Orin Minushi? Did I get you right? Maggie Minushi? Mirabella? Help me with your last name, Mirabella. Thank you. And Holden Gallagher? Great names. Jacks, oh, we have a Jackson. Jackson Binal, Binaldo?
Binaldo.
Thank you. And Ray? Thank you all very much. Turn around, they want to take a picture. Turn around, guys. And moms and dads, thank you very much for bringing them in. All right, thank you. That was cute.
Good work. Thank you, ladies.
I always say it's so hard to continue after that. Okay, next on tonight's agenda is the approval of the minutes for our board meeting on September 24th, 2019. Anyone see any corrections? No, may I have a motion to approve? A second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
So noted. Okay, those minutes are then approved. Is there anyone wishing to make a public comment? Please come on up to the podium and state your name and address. And may I remind you that for public comments, we limit it to five minutes. Okay, so, oh, good. Come on up. Say your name and address.
Okay, Colleen Matatol, 124 Wheeler Road. On be, on behalf of the WSBC, I want to thank the board, Mr. Emmett, the principals, the social services staff, and the Weathersfield Public School staff for participating in something very dear to my heart, which is the Sandy Hook Promise to say hello. Several schools participated in this last year, but this year, we saw a dramatic increase, sorry, in schools participating. It's focusing on social inclusion by simply saying hello, sharing a smile. It can make an impact. With the support of Mr. Emmett, we saw that almost all the schools participated this year, and this starts with Hello Week. Some activities were coloring a word hello and making a mural. That was at Hamner. Wearing name tags, say hey day, which is talking to all the students, and wear green to support the Sandy Hook Promise. The WSBC, the WSBC hopes to see activities like this throughout the year and for years to come. A special thanks to Dot Devink for bringing this idea to the WSBC, and to Mr. Emmett for listening, supporting, and striving for a more inclusive community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen.
Thank you, Colleen. Anyone else? Okay, so, Mr. Emmett, thank you for doing that too. You have some communication to share?
I do. Thank you, Mrs. Granato. Good evening, everyone. At the seat of me, you'll hear a little bit of a presentation from Erica Techshere and Bonnie Smith concerning a proposed student survey that is on tonight's agenda for students at the secondary level. This survey is similar in context to the ERAS survey that was administered back in 2016. This data assists us with identifying supports for our students and also helps with grant applications for program funding for future services for our students. This is a great partnership between the school district and the town. You have a copy of that draft survey with you. This would be something This would be something that would be administered at both the middle school and high school level. We'd be utilizing our technology to implement that. Also, this evening on the agenda is a series of policies that the Policy and Planning Committee had reviewed. We have a couple that are still in progress, meaning that there are approvals to go this evening. The one with undirected play, so you know, is still one of those that we are working on. So we definitely want to have principals and our teachers weigh in about what that schedule would look like if we decided to add any additional undirected play. What would that come at the expense of? In addition to that, so you know, Policy and Planning Committee, the latest batch of updates from shipment, a good one, arrived yesterday. So we have a Policy and Planning Committee meeting coming up on the 21st of October, so we'll dig into those. And I should have data around the undirected play from principals. I'll be meeting with them actually tomorrow, right after Administrative Team. We've got an event coming up next week on the 16th. The Weathersfield Eagles football team will be embarking on their tackle literacy program. They will be headed to Webb, High Crest and Hammer Schools, heading into classrooms to support teachers in reading and writing. So it's going to be a nice opportunity for our high school students to be able to give back and reconnect with their teachers at the elementary level. So it's coming up next Wednesday afternoon. I'll have more for you in the Friday update on that. We continue to monitor carefully the process with Triple E. As you probably know, we have approximately twenty towns here in Connecticut where Triple E has been identified. The closest town to Weathersfield is South Windsor. We continue to listen to the direction of the Central Connecticut Health District in terms of making informed decisions. We did see a rather cold morning over the course of the weekend and we think that the activity is starting to wane at this point in time. Again, I would urge all residents to continue to use necessary precautions. Should something change, obviously we'll communicate that. In addition to that communication, we would also coordinate with the town as well. As you know, town activities are still going on as well and we would make a decision that was cohesive between both town and school district. I've been keeping you up to date with regard to a couple of our ongoing building issues that we're facing. We have a pesky leak over in Emerson Williams in the music room. Tremco, the roofing company that is contracted to inspect and repair both town and school roofs, have been out multiple times and it still continues to be an issue. I was over in the music room today. We're currently not using it, so Ms. Fortuna is adjusting and either going into classrooms or utilizing the upper section of the media center to provide music while we wait for this repair to be made. So I'm hopeful that Tremco will be out. Unfortunately, we had like two solid weeks of quiet weather and Tremco was booked elsewhere. And I'm a little, you know, nervous about some of the incoming weather here later on this week with a pretty significant rainstorm. The other piece, building related that we're working on, is a situation over at High Crest in the first grade pod with regard to a plumbing leak that's occurring behind the wall, within a wall between a bathroom and a first grade classroom. So at this point in time, we had water that was leaking through the wall into the classroom. We have shut the water off in that section and we're expecting the plumber out shortly to get that fixed. That's another priority. We always talk about the buildings and all of the little negative things about the buildings. I do want to say, we had a member of the community reach out and send me an email thanking the town for keeping the school grounds at Weathersfield High School looking so good. She goes for sporting events and has been very impressed with how the landscaping looks and how neat and clean and orderly things look at Weathersfield High School. Tomorrow at Webb, Sushi is coming to read with the kids. We have one of our employees who has a dog, who is a therapy dog, certified therapy dog. We've gone through all of our processes around Karma and making sure that we have the appropriate insurance. And Sushi is certified, so Sushi will be visiting Webb School tomorrow for the first time to read with our students. We're looking at this as an opportunity for maybe some of those students that are struggling readers, that feel a little bit self-conscious about reading. Sushi will be a good person, a dog person, to be able to read to because she never judges. So we're looking forward to seeing Sushi. And then at the next board meeting, a couple of upcoming things in terms of goals and objectives. Be requesting an executive session at the next board meeting to present and go over my upcoming goals for the current year. In addition to that, it's my expectation that I will bring before you an action item to set the 2019, 2020 graduation date. Legislation has changed where we are no longer bound by legislation to wait until after April 1st. So we would be able to set the date. This would be certainly good for Project Safe Grad and getting things squared away. Right now, at this point in time, the last day of school is Friday, June 12th. So yeah, Friday, graduation day. Isaac, does that meet with your expectations?
Yeah.
I would think it would. So that's what we will look to do with the meeting coming up on the 24th. And with that, that is communications. Thank you.
Anyone have questions for Mr. Emmett?
I just have one. In light of the two problems with water, all problems with buildings have to do with water, by the way. How has the relationship with maintenance and custodial with town taking the lead on that? How's that working?
It's working out well. I think the problem with the Emerson piece is that you're dealing with an outside contractor. So you're kind of at their beck and call when they can come out and fix. And it is not as if the town has ignored it. Tremco's been out multiple times and they think they have it fixed and then we get a rainstorm and it leaks again. And it's, they've traced it to a roof drain. I will include a picture of this roof drain. Remember, the roof drain dates back to about 1952. The work that we're doing with Phase Two, which we continue to work on about a long-range plan for our buildings, this is another example of a building being extraordinarily tired. So I think the town has been responsive. I know that there's levels of frustration out in the schools. I talk with parents, I've talked with staff as well, but I do think the town is working to try and resolve this. I do know that we've been shorthanded in the maintenance department as well. Our plumber has been out, so he's recently returned. So we know there was an issue with the high school in bathrooms with Bradley sinks that needed to be addressed and then High Crest is next on the list. So thank you for the question.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. All right, tonight we have two action items. Ginger, would you read Action Item 6A for us?
Yes. Move that the Weathersfield Board of Education support the administration of the Youth Voices Count Survey in collaboration with the town of Weathersfield.
Okay, is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, and any discussion? We had the survey in our packet and also, can you come up and, oh, thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education members, Superintendent Emmett. My name is Erica Texera and I'm the Assistant Director of Social and Youth Services for the town of Weathersfield. I come before you tonight to share with the Board of Education our department's proposal to once again administer an online and confidential youth needs assessment survey, which will be administered during the school day to all seventh through twelfth graders that attend Silas Dean Middle School and Weathersfield High School. The first survey was done in fall of 2016, which allowed for us to collect valuable baseline data. We are currently looking to conduct this next survey in November of this year. Youth Services, in conjunction with the Weathersfield Youth Advisory Board, received a grant from the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving, donor advisory fund to conduct the second youth needs assessment survey. The survey is to help the community leaders learn about youth experiences and feelings regarding substance use, depression, anxiety, social media, gaming, and gambling. By conducting this survey, Social and Youth Services is looking to solicit student input and perspective regarding substance use and at-risk behaviors and to use the data to best guide our future planning, especially around seeking out potential grant opportunities. We are looking to hire B. Wayland Smith Consulting LLC to administer the Youth Voice Count Survey. Bonnie Smith, the same consultant we used for previous, our previous surveys here tonight to answer any specific questions regarding the survey. The implementation of the survey is a four-step process, one being communication to parents, two, conducting of the survey, three, data analysis, and four, reports and presentations. In conclusion, the results of the survey will guide the Weathersfield Department of Social and Youth Services as we plan to provide prevention programs for our youth and promote overall community awareness. I appreciate you allowing us to come here tonight and share an overview of the youth needs assessment process, and I will turn it over now to Bonnie Smith, the consultant. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Erica really covered that so beautifully. I'm just here really to answer questions. I do happen to be a mom in town, coincidentally. Weathersfield, as you know, did the survey back in 2016 through ERACE. ERACE merged with another entity back in the spring of 2019. At that time, they discontinued their survey services. As a consultant that utilizes survey data in a number of different communities across the state, I felt it was important to find a way to continue with that particular survey tool to allow for ongoing evaluation and planning. So I purchased the rights to the ERACE survey tool and have since enhanced the tool to be more encompassing of an overall spectrum of behavioral health and social issues concerning social media, online gaming, as Erica said. So the survey is completely comparable with prior year's administration. It's just it expanded to bring in some other subject matter that we know are really crucial issues. You do have a copy of both the survey and a potential add-on section that addresses some other issues, and it's entirely up to all of you as you work with Youth Services to determine if indeed you want those add-on questions and if so, what grade levels you'd like to do that with.
Okay. Any questions for Bonnie? Diane?
What, in 2016, what were there, after that survey, was there anything implemented? Did that survey and that data direct Youth Services or the high school to add in any programmatic changes or?
So we definitely took the data and looking at as baseline data because we never had done a survey before, which was pretty favorable to the community. We have looked to implement some prevention work with participating and collaborating with the DARE officers and all the DARE graduations, as well as partner with some programs at the high school as well as the middle school. We tweaked our after-school programming a little bit and we also participated in a police and youth grant program, which was very successful, as well as a few of the things that we, but with this, we're hoping that it will open doors to bigger grants in the future and the near future that would allow us to build our capacity with providing prevention work.
Okay, anyone else? Kevin?
I just want to confirm that it's obviously anonymous by students and also if parents choose to, if they allow their student to opt out.
So there's a passive consent process. I provide a sample that you can alter as a school district in whatever way you prefer. So that means the passive consent notification goes home to all parents and whatever means you do that at the middle and high school. And parents can, by a certain date, choose to not have their child participate. And in addition, parents can choose to review the survey tool. I request that it not be provided online, just for survey fidelity purposes, but they could always come into a main office and review the survey tool before they determine their choice for their child. Additionally, youth do not have to participate. We don't want to say to youth, do it or don't do it, but it is absolutely optional and the way that I administer the survey behind the scenes, I can select that IP addresses are not identified, which really further de-identifies the data right down to students using certain Chromebooks, et cetera, in the schools. I really, from both sides, we don't want to know what student responses are.
Okay. Anyone else? John?
When do you think this is going to be able for Weathersfield students to take?
Oh, well, Erica has asked if we are indeed approved to move forward, that it be implemented in November, and it will be ready. The questions that I've recently added have come from other validated tools. I will be doing some focus groups over the next week or so. I have one tomorrow evening with middle and high school youth in a neighboring community. I really just want to make sure some of the terminology really is comfortable for the youth that are going to be taking the survey with some of the new indicators in addition. And I also plan to meet with an internet safety specialist and have his take on how we've worded some of the questions around social media and online gaming, and that will occur this week as well. So the tool that you have in front of you is 99% final. I just can foresee potentially minor wording changes according to focus group outcomes and other specialist input.
And then how would this be disseminated to the community? How is this going to get out to students in grades seven through 12?
And, Mr. Emmett, you can correct me if I'm wrong. We are looking to use Chromebooks during advisory periods to reach the youth in seventh through twelfth grade.
Yeah, that's accurate.
And then what we would look to see, John, once the results come out, we would have a presentation here at the board meeting, as we did with the ERACE survey. We actually had a hard copy of that and it provided us some really good quality data. And again, data that I, you know, I had my prediction and my perception of what the biggest issue would be at the high school and the ERACE data was a little different than what I anticipated. So I think this is, it's, again, we have good baseline data and Erica talked about the idea of looking for grant funds. That directly aligns with Goal Three of our strategic plan. So, and again, I think the idea here is the anonymity is important, but it's always important to get that data to show where we need to push our resources, so.
And then, I know the middle school and the high school have focus groups already. I know Isaac is the current president of the high school senior class and they have student councils and so does the middle school. Has this been given to them now, not to take, but to review, to see whether or not their questions are valid for today's youth?
So we did not give it to any of those groups that you mentioned, but we did go through the Youth Advisory Board, which has youth from, mostly right now, it's the high school, and they were able to view it as well and add any input.
Okay, so there's what, how many students got to see that?
Probably like four, five?
Four or five.
And Bonnie's doing it with groups of surrounding towns.
I would just, I mean, my own perception, I know there's some real positive groups at both the middle school and the high school. You know, they're into it. And, you know, there's a few, you know, good individuals, four or five on the Youth Advisory. But are you aware of that, this survey being out there, other than seeing it on the board right now?
Mr. Emmett mentioned it to me a couple, I think it was last week at the other meeting, but besides that, I was not aware of this.
So I just think that if we want it to be positive, then we've got to get to the base of what we want to do, because it's just going to be another survey.
And I think that's a great focus for when, to piggyback when the results come in, to really take on these focus groups with the students that are in the middle school and the high school. I think that's great, yeah.
I just think prior to the survey being done, it should be given, let them know. I just think you're going to spin your wheels.
Can I speak to that also, Mr. Cassio? I would be reluctant to have too many students within the district so close to survey administration time. Look in detail at the survey tool at this time, again, to just maintain fidelity of the implementation process, because what we wouldn't want to occur prior to implementation is any sort of discussion about the survey and survey responses among the small groups or larger groups of students, which is why tomorrow night, for example, I'm going next door to Rocky Hill, because they have no implementation plans at this time. So I'll get feedback from 20 youth, grade seven through 12. I love, in my work, I do a lot of community participatory research and absolutely you have to have youth or whatever your population is involved in development of your tool and certainly dissemination of results. In fact, the last question in the tool is asking youth, would they like to know what comes of the survey? Because I want to know. Do they care? And I hope they do. I think they will. And I'm hoping we can use groups such as this to sit down and look at data when it comes out and say, does this ring true for you? Why do you think this is this way? Why might it be different? What could we look at differently? And that's where Weathersfield-specific youth will be absolutely ideal and serve the process well.
Is there a certain amount that need to continue to do the survey to make it valid?
Well, last time, we had 87.5% of youth in grade seven through 12, which is a wonderful response rate. So Erica and I have talked a little bit behind the scenes about means of making sure youth feel comfortable with the survey when it's time to implement, as well as take it seriously. There are things we do behind the scenes when we look at the data to determine if a student maybe didn't take the tool seriously and they're removed from the sample, but we don't want to have to see too much of that. What we'd like to do, and do you want to speak to that piece, Erica, about the video?
Oh, yeah. So we look, since our Youth Advisory Board is kind of where we're So we look, since our youth advisory board is kind of where we're looking to get a lot of feedback and the support for the survey, we have used some of the students to actually, there's the channel at the high school to disseminate information, and they're hearing it from their peers, so people they look up to and also that they are understanding that this is important and what we need and what we'd like to see use for the data.
And I would say that the expectation, John, to your point about making sure the kids know, this wouldn't be something where it would be, you know, you're going to advisory on Wednesday, and it's the first you're hearing about it and you're taking it. I think it's something that we need to make sure that the student body knows both at the middle school and the high school in advance, understanding why we're getting this data, how we want you to take it seriously, how it is anonymous, so that we can get a valid sample size. An 87.5%, you know, completion rate, that's, I mean, generally with the survey, you're looking, what, 30% is about what you'll get most surveys?
This is a captive audience, so we would definitely want to see 60 or more, but 87.5 is fantastic.
Really good. Excellent.
Yeah.
Okay, we have Ginger?
I have a sort of a follow-on to John's questions about the presentation of the survey to the kids. Having read the questions, the questions are important, but they're sensitive. And who's training the teachers who are giving it and presenting it to them?
That's a great question. So the teacher's buy-in and teacher's comfort in administering, not really so much the tool, because they're not doing anything other than instructing the...
They're introducing it.
Exactly. Is huge. I have a script that has been in place for a long time that is available for you as a district to look at and revise accordingly, and a lot of it comes from the top down. I've been in communities in past years where the administrators in the building didn't necessarily feel strongly that this was an important use of time. So as a result, their staff didn't as well. And you could see it in low response rates and incomplete surveys overall or inaccurate answers. So having staff advise from the top down that this is important, this is going to take 20 minutes or less, the data are going to be used in these ways, it's anonymous, et cetera, is really important. So I do have a script, and as Erica was touching upon, we're hoping that we can have this video that explains directly to youth, hey, you're going to take a school survey today. It's anonymous, it's voluntary, et cetera, from someone in the community, a student ideally saying, hey, we're going to do this, and this is why, in a quick 60-second video.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I have a few. First of all, when do we get the report back if we go through all this? Because this information, I do think, is very valuable. These children are living in a time that's so complicated and so complex. The more information we have on them, the more valuable we, it is. So when would we get the reporting back?
So we plan on eight weeks.
Eight weeks?
It could be less, but we're going to stay eight to start.
Okay. As long as it's, you know, I love the S-Bacs, we get them the next year, you know. But the other thing, too, we have the optional survey section. We just passed, or we're going to pass a, or work on, a bullying policy, and I see that they have bullying and harassment. How do we ask for those? How do we have those put into the survey as a board?
Oh, well, you all can talk to Mr. Emmett about what you'd like or not like to be included, and as Mr. Emmett and Erica communicate that. Erica is the liaison with me, and I will make a Weathersfield-specific tool with those add-on sections.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other discussion? Okay, so we'll take a vote on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion 6A passes. Thank you, Erica. Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you, ladies.
Good evening.
Motion 6B. Chris Healy is our chair of policies, and he's not here tonight, so I'll read it. The recommended motion for 6B is move that the Weathersfield Board of Education approve the proposed legislative policy updates. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and we'll have discussion on this. And Mr. Emmett, you had some words about this, but go ahead, Diane.
The physical, the first concern I have is about the physical activity undirected play in student discipline. That policy speaks specifically to disciplinary action and discipline regarding deprivation of these periods. The paragraph, "The administration may include additional time beyond the 20 minutes required for physical exercise devoted to undirected play during the regular school day for elementary students." That should really be in a separate policy that talks about physical activity, undirected play, the definitions of it, what, the guidance for it, those types of things. Because this policy specifically is regarding the discipline of holding that back. So I think that we should amend that to take that paragraph out and have that paragraph in a whole separate policy that we do that discusses undirected play, physical activity, like I said, the definitions. And I believe, Mr. Emmett, you were getting some feed, you were going to get some feedback back from some of the teachers and so forth, which would be in an entirely separate policy regarding the wholeness of undirected play and physical activity. But this is just about the discipline aspect of it.
Anyone else with a comment on this?
I agree with Diane. Well, I think it should be two separate policies. One, just dealing with the discipline, that you can't hold back recess for any reason, whether it be the structured recess with a gym teacher or the recess at lunchtime, and that be policy X, Y, Z, whatever the number is Diane has there. And then the second one, when we get the information that Mr. Emmett's asking of the staff and of legal, we could make a policy of undirected play, or unstructured play, is it? Undirected.
They're calling it undirected.
Undirected. I wasn't sure which one. But I think that's the way to go. Then you have two very clear, succinct policies, in my opinion.
It's interesting. This is the one that, you know, I'm such a proponent of play for children, and unstructured play is what they've always called it. Now it's undirected. But as we read through this policy, we also were told that the General Assembly is going to have a task force or a group that's going to look at the definition of undirected play and what it means. And if you read all the research on it, they do want children out there with nobody really refereeing them, you know, they're not following something on their iPad. It's completely their creative play. So I have a, I just have a problem with, it just says administration, but then I work on the leader-leader model, and I said that that would get down to the teachers, too. I would like to see more emphasis on undirected play and perhaps a separate policy on this deprivation of physical activity as two separate policies.
Well, it would be very clear then, Bobby, a teacher, a new teacher, young teacher coming in, could then go and see what the undirected play means without, oh, am I right or am I wrong? Am I right? You know, it would be very clear that way, I think.
Yeah, and I think the idea of, you know, getting the perspective from teachers and administrators, and when we had our last policy committee meeting, Kelly, you brought up the question about brain breaks, and, you know, I talked about yoga, and we had the question of, well, is that really undefined play? You also have the issue of, with the schedule that we have, where, where does this, well, first, how much additional time? I'm interested to understand what staff are thinking about that, and what does that come at the expense of? So we've got some questions to go through. And then the other piece here, as I go out and make my rounds in the school buildings, I know that there are teachers that will utilize time, like on Friday at Hammer Fun Friday, so that's an earned opportunity where that is undirected play. They are in the classroom and they are engaged in coloring. They may be playing with blocks on the floor, and they are totally on their own. There are other aspects, like school-based programs, like jogathons. Most of our elementary schools will do a jogathon. That will encompass the better part of a day between grade levels going out. So I want to be careful that those meaningful programs in our elementary schools are not sacrificed. So I am fully behind, you know, parsing this one out, meeting the mandate within the policy as it is around the discipline piece, but parsing this out, getting some feedback from our leadership teams, our administration, and then getting together again as a policy committee and wrapping something up that is separate from this discipline piece.
Right. And Mr. Emmett, I agree with you on a lot of it. I don't agree with you on the fact that a Friday afternoon where the kids are sitting around and working is unstructured or undirected play. I did look it up, because as I told you, it's a focus of mine. It is synonymous with unstructured. It means it's not directed or guided. And I continued to look through it. And "undirected play with others allows children to learn how to work as a team, to share, to negotiate, to listen, to resolve conflicts. Self-driven play also lets kids practice their decision-making skills, explore their imagination and creativity, and discover new interests." And I do find that this undirected, unstructured play really has a place in our social and emotional curriculum. And I did find a marvelous quote, it happened to come from a very smart man, Albert Einstein, who said that play is the highest form of research. And it really does allow our children to do their creative research. So I really would like this to be looked at more. And I don't think it has to be in place of something else. I think teachers are very savvy in directing their day, and when you see your group in front of you has just lost it, then they need some unstructured, undirected play, some way to let themselves get back into focus. So I would like to have this looked at again, if we could.
Send it back to policy?
Yeah, I think we should send this back to policy.
I mean, I think we could just make a motion to remove that paragraph and then accept everything else.
Correct.
Would you like that? That would be the way to go?
Because that covers the component of the discipline.
That's required.
Yep.
So I would make a motion that Policy Number 550, "Physical Activity Undirected Play in Student Discipline," be adopted with the removal of the paragraph, "The administration may include additional time beyond the 20 minutes required for physical exercise devoted to undirected play during the regular school day for elementary school students," and be included in another policy.
In a separate policy.
Separate policy.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion on that, or can we vote on that motion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? So the amendment to our physical activity, undirected play in student discipline policy has passed. Thank you. All right. So moving back...
That was the amendment, but now we need the underlying policy.
Now we have to go back to the...
Underlying policy.
Right. So back to the original policy of move that the Weathersfield Board of Ed approved the proposed legislative policy updates.
Hang on. I was just talking about that one. I have a comment about another one, too.
Go ahead. Because there's a lot of them.
There's a lot of them, and I don't know if I can find it, because there's so many here. But the one about bullying, I had brought to the, to the Policy and Planning Commission Committee meeting, that if we're going to have a policy on bullying, it can't just be for students, it's got to be for everybody. And I know that we include the language about the staff, the discipline, if the policies aren't followed, but, I mean, there really needs to be a, there really needs to be something in there about bullying that occurs by adults, teachers, staff, coaches, those types of things. Because, I mean, it's got to be both ways. It can't just be kids. It's got to include staff as well. And I noticed that language wasn't included in this, and I think it's very important that that be in there, too. And it also gives the kids the perception that everyone's held to that standard and not just them.
Okay. Any other discussion on this?
I agree with Diane. I think we had some very tense issues with coaches this past spring, and I think it would be very wise for us to put into this policy or amend it somehow to include any adult or, as she said, staff or coach, anybody working with our children, need to be held to the same standard as the children do in terms of bullying. So I don't, I don't know if we should send it back to policy for adding on or make another policy called, uh, discipline, uh, policy for bullying with adults. I don't know what's the best route there.
I'd suggest sending that one back to the policy committee, because as I had mentioned earlier, I think this is something that needs a look by our council.
That's right.
I want to be cautious with this, because you're also talking about an issue around human resources, and that is outside of the purview of the board. We set the policy. I want to make sure we set a policy that, that covers us and does not open us up to any liability. So my suggestion on that one would be, let's table that one, and let's bring that one back to policy and have a look at that.
And in the meantime, would you speak to Shipman and Goodman to forget some guidance for us, Mike?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other discussion on our policy? So we're going to remove that one?
That one's removed.
Do we have a motion to remove that one?
I'll make a motion to remove, I don't know which number it is.
I don't either.
If we can look it up. To remove the policy, to table the policy of...
It's in the 5000s. I know that.
The 5000s regarding bullying.
58.
And refer it back to the Policy and Planning Committee. I would second that.
Is there a second on that? Okay. Any discussion? Any further discussion? And we know which one we're talking about? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that, now we've got two motions on this one. Any others on any of the other policies we looked at?
Policy 51,000.
5000 even? 5150.
5150.
Thank you.
Ellen, did you get that?
What was the number?
5150.
Thank you.
Page 994.
It was a lot. It was a lot.
213 pages.
John's volunteering to be on Policy and Planning.
Yes.
Been there, done that.
Good words, Smith. John?
Still there, John. Do it again.
All right. Any further discussion? So we can go back to our original proposal here, move that the Weathersfield Board of Ed approved the proposed legislative policy update with those two motions. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so Motion 6B passes.
But was there any other? You just included all the other policies then.
Yep. All the other ones were included now.
The question I have is who moved in, who seconded, because we, we did an amendment and then we're tabling portions.
There were two amendments.
Right.
Your original motion was by Bobby.
Yeah, and I seconded it.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay.
It went fast. Don't be in bed, Eli. My head was like a ping pong ball.
I want you to know, I have so many papers here.
I know. I want annual class size.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, so we have a report tonight, Mr. Emmett, I believe, is doing it, on the annual class size as of October 1st, 2019.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, now if I could just find my paper.
What do I have to do here? View. Oops. Um, if you go view full screen. Where is it? Screen out. There it goes.
I'm sure he doesn't. You should come back for policy. I have your idea on my agent, Dan, to talk to you. Look at her. Here it is. You are a multitasker. You are a multitasker. This lady, who's a fighter, who's fighting her dangers. You stayed.
Eric.
Make people out of the room and order.
Need to filter chat.
Here it comes. It's coming.
All right. We got it? All right. All right. Well, thank you again, everyone. Good evening. This is our annual look at our class size for both elementary and secondary for 2019, 2020. This is done in conjunction with our annual submission to the state of the PSIS, the Public School Information System. PSIS is due, in theory, on October 1st. The state's extended that deadline to the 15th, so we're in the final throes of gathering up all of our data to submit to the state. This October 1st count is obviously very important in terms of our enrollment, in terms The state's extended that deadline to the 15th, so we're in the final throes of gathering up all of our data to submit to the state. This October 1st count is obviously very important in terms of our enrollment, in terms of funding, and we must submit this to the state. So our table of contents, the context of this is the same as it's been for all of my years as superintendent. So we talk about elementary, middle school, and high school sections, along with our Transition Academy as well. So here's the count. This is the comparison. So as a district, here in Weathersfield, for the Weathersfield Public Schools, we, last year, on October 1st, had 3,588 students. This year, as of October 1st, 2019, we are at 3,580 students. So we've seen a net loss of a total of eight students. It's interesting when you look, you see early intervention pre-K. Our pre-K numbers are up compared to last year. Our elementary numbers are down compared to last year. And part of that is consistent with our Phase 1 enrollment report, where we talked about kindergarten numbers being down over the next two years, and then they start to bump up again. The middle school, I had mentioned earlier that we saw an increase in students specifically in grade seven. We're still working on the whys, where did they come from? But we went from 535 students last year to 567. When we did an analysis, we had an increase of 33 grade seven students compared to last year and a decrease of eight eighth graders. And then our numbers at Weathersfield High School went up slightly to a total of 1,144. Our Transition Academy, we've seen a decrease there. We had a large number of students that aged out last year and graduated from the program. They met the age of 21, so they made that transition to adult services or the working world. So as a total, 3,580.
Excuse me, Mike.
Sure.
On the Transition Academy, are all six of those children Weathersfield children?
All Weathersfield. Good question. All Weathersfield students. So as you can see, the breakdown of classes, what we did, and you recall from budget times, we knew we were going to have a large number of kindergarten students at High Crest, so as part of the budget, you had requested that fourth section of Kinder. That fourth section was certainly needed. So what we've done elsewhere in some of our other schools, we've seen a decrease in sections, so we were able to absorb elsewhere. So we saw a decrease in a section at Charles Wright. That offsets the increase in the section at High Crest. And then we had some movement at Hamner, where people stayed at Hamner, but they moved to different grade levels based upon the need.
I have a question on this page, Mike.
Sure.
I see the Strive program, and am I reading it correctly, that in Hamner, there are two Strive children in our grade two and one in grade three?
That is correct.
And they, are they mainstreamed into those grades, or are they both mostly housed just in Hamner?
Great question. What happens with them is they have a self-contained classroom.
Right, I saw that.
However, wherever they have the opportunity to mainstream with their typical peers, that's what they do. Mrs. Granato can attest to that. We had a visit over to Hamner last week.
Yep.
And they were working on a project outside, they were painting, and the Strive program was included within that activity.
No, I'm all for the program. I just wanted to make sure I was seeing this right, that they're integrated into this grade three when possible.
Absolutely.
Same thing with grade two, there's two integrated when possible.
Correct. And that's also indicative, not only of the Strive program, Elaine, but the ABA program as well. So it is a self-contained program where they get the ABA supports, but wherever they have the ability to, whether it be eating in the cafeteria, participating in specials, going out at recess, they will be integrated into mainstream classroom with adult support. That's the other key piece. So here's our list. This is where we're at. This is a familiar slide. You see this over the course of the summer. We have broken out the Strive and ABA programs. So you can see. And this year, unlike, how many other years have we had it where we were dealing with 26 or 27 in a classroom? We're pretty stable at the elementary level at this point in time. And here's our average class sizes in our range. So in terms of the number of classes at 26 or higher at the elementary level, we have not seen a class size that high in the past four years. And again, I think one of the things to look at when you look at Table 3 and you look at the average class size, we do have disparity between the elementary schools. When I've got High Crest, for example, with over 400 students, and I've got Charles Wright and Webb with a fraction of that. That's one of the things that that Phase 2 process, when we wrap that up, is going to be able to address through redistricting as part of the long-range building plan. So we can make our school districts more equitable across all of our schools. Here's our middle school. And you can see the numbers here with regard to our levels with language arts and math. One of the things I want to bring your attention to in terms of phys ed, you know, there are implications when we have those budget reductions. And one of the reductions we had was we lost a phys ed teacher at the middle school. So you think about it. You had three phys ed teachers covering all of those sections. You lost one, and that position moved over to the high school to cover a retirement. And then you added 33 additional seventh graders. So you can see here, there is a real, kind of a bubble there in terms of the number of kids in that particular program. And again, the numbers with our language, our world language, excuse me, the world language numbers are robust pretty much across the board. You know, one of the things that you'll notice, you'll see a lot of Spanish and very few French. That was one of the reasons why we were looking at potentially phasing French out. Our numbers continue to actually be quite low. And here we are for grade eight. So, and I will say, the leadership team and the administration at the middle school has done great work in trying to balance these classes out as best as possible. And then here are our grade seven and grade eight class sizes. And you'll notice, again, indicative of the piece at the middle school with the loss of that gym teacher, the number of classes with 30 or more students has gone up pretty dramatically.
Mr. Emmett?
Yes?
Am I correct in saying that, in general, the classes, the, I guess, core educational classes are less than 30?
That is correct. So if you look and you see, for example, we have it broken out by teams. So for grade eight, our Indigo team, the highest we see there, we have a Level 1 Language Arts class of 26. We have a Language Arts Level 1 class of 25 from the Magenta. And then when we get into the elective, so for example, Italian, I only got one section of Italian, and that's at 30. And then our Spanish classes are all, with the most part, are all very well subscribed.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
That's just a lot of people to be in a gym class at once, a poor teacher. Are there other, like, there's got to be other people helping them out, right? Or is it just them with 30 kids?
It's two of the teachers with the 30 kids. And what they've tried to do is, where they have students with special needs that have PERS, they've tried to float the PERS in to provide that support. But again, when the resources are slim, that's the difficult piece. The other thing I want to draw your attention to also, down on the bottom of Table 5, you have the Human Relations. The Human Relations course, that's our middle school component of Strive, that we were able to, and now, how did we get that program? Well, we took a special ed teacher from the high school, which is certainly impacting us at the high school level, but moved that position down to the middle school. So that individual is working with a group of students that need that level of support, structure, and therapy. So they will spend time in the Human Resources classroom, or Human Relations classroom, excuse me, and then they will also go out into the mainstream environment to the extent that it's possible. Okay, so here again, our average class size at the middle school has gone up. Part of that is indicative of the reduction in staff and the increase in students. And then here we are at the high school. So you can see our numbers are pretty robust here. Where you get into some of the smaller numbers are some of our electives and some of our specialized classes.
I have a question on page 11, Mike.
Sure.
I'm on the Reading Lab. And if I remember, that's Reading 180, correct?
It's the old Read 180 course, yes. So that particular program is for students that require additional support. Yes.
All right, I just wondered. And do they spend, may I ask, do they spend more than just one period in there, if I'm correct? Sometimes they spend, I think a little, I think they stay there longer because they have an individualized program in Reading 180.
It's what will happen there, it will depend upon the IEP.
Oh, okay.
So if the IEP calls for that amount of time, they'll be there for that. In some cases, we'll utilize co-taught classrooms, so the child can get the special ed support in the co-taught classroom with the regular ed and the certified special ed teacher as well.
Michael, just a comment in here on the high school class sizes. Those classes that we were told about in Language Arts or English, America Through the Eyes of Women, Cultural Changes in America, Race in America, they're there, and I'm very glad to see it, and they seem to be robust numbers there.
Absolutely.
That's great. And the other thing, I did have an opportunity, I think it was a year or two ago now, to talk to teachers at the high school in a group with Tom Moore. We had a group together, and there were classes at that time of 30. And I said to them, "How do you do this? How do you do a class of 30?" And their response made me feel fabulous, all Weathersfield people should. They said the students were so well behaved, that it really was the amount of work they had to do which was problematic. It wasn't so much the behavior or crowd control, as we all say in the elementary grades. So I'm glad to see the class sizes lower, but even when they were that high, the students were very well behaved.
It's interesting, to your point, Mrs. Granato, you look at the programs like Shakespearean Studies, and you know, you've got a class of 20 studying Shakespeare. That's nice. I like to see that. And our journalism, you know, you've got Journalism 1 and 2. You've got large numbers there. And I can tell you, that's taught by.
It's our good friend John Martin, right?
Exactly. So, you know, again, there is a lot of rigor there, and to give our kids the opportunity to explore these different courses, I think is critical. It's great to hit the basics, but to be able to cover some of the, you know, the arts. One of the courses that I think is very popular is Film as Literature, again, 24 and 22 in two sections. So they're always talking about that one. So.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Is there, so AP French, I know French had come up, it says there's two students in there?
That's correct.
Is there like legit, just a class of two students?
So what we've done with that, good question. As you know, the French teacher was on the block, and it was on the reduction list, and then it was saved. We went out a couple of times looking for a French teacher. They are hard to come by. So what we ended up doing was, we took an existing dual-certified teacher, who is both French and Spanish, and moved that individual out of the Spanish courses to teach French, and then we hired a Spanish teacher to take on all of those Spanish courses. So I am able to cover all of the courses with the exception of AP French. So what we have done in the past, you know Edge Annuity. Edge Annuity has been our credit retrieval program for our kids that are struggling and achieving credits. Edge Annuity also has the ability where it has online coursework. So those two students are actually getting AP French through an online experience. Now, with that online experience, I'm speaking from experience as a parent, more and more of our students are going off to college, and they are not getting seat time with a professor, they're getting an online course, because colleges and universities are struggling to find, and the cost of hiring professors has been difficult. So the idea of giving these kids the experience of managing an online class, and it does have the support at the high school, so there's still a tutor there that supports them in the process, and Edge Annuity provides a certified teacher to provide the content for these kids. So that's how we were able to solve that issue.
Cool, thanks. That's very courageous.
Well, that's, again, the team at the high school. I thought it was a unique situation, and it was, again, having the resources, like with the Edge Annuity. The Edge Annuity program has been great for our kids that are struggling to make up credits. It's all about giving kids a chance. So, and for this, even with our AP French students, we're seeing a lower number of kids engaged in French, but to be able to still provide an opportunity for our kids at that level, I'm very pleased. Okay, so here are more class sizes.
John, John has.
I have a question with regards to the high school. And, you know, it's, I noticed that we have AP Biology, Honors Level 1 and Level 2. But in Chemistry, we have AP Chemistry, but no Honors or Level 1s or 2s. Is there reasons for that?
Yeah, it's called Not Enough Teachers. Okay. And it's interesting you bring that question up, because that is the exact same thing I talked about with our parents at our last WSPC meeting. So if we had enough staffing to add the Honors Chemistry, so I could have AP Chemistry, Honors Chemistry and Level 1, we'd certainly love to do it.
But if a student is in AP Chemistry, can they opt to take Honors or Level 1 with that, within that confine of the class of the 17 students? Is that an option for them?
I don't think it is. I'd have to defer to, I'm not thinking that that's an option. It's either AP or it isn't.
You know, sometime, and Sally's in the back there, I'd love to talk at Student Program and Services about online courses, and because then the world is open to us. But do we have to have, it's going to sound like a ridiculous question, do we have to have an adult in the room? Do they have, that's a requirement?
You will absolutely want to have an adult supporting. And the other piece, too, we need to be careful of, is our contractual obligations as well.
Right.
So with unions.
But I'm looking here, could we ever have Mandarin? You know, you hear about, but we could.
Potentially, yeah. Good point. So, yeah, and John, to that point, I had heard that question from our WSPC just last week. And, you know, I'd love to be able to offer up additional opportunities between ECE to do Honors, to do AP. And then the questions that the parents had, well, why don't we do Honors in lieu of AP? Well, I've got kids going on that track where they're looking for AP everything. So it's difficult. I'd love to have more resources. So that's a budget, budget piece we need to put there.
But at this point, the instructor can't be creative enough to do different leveling in one class?
Yeah, that's, especially with an AP situation, we wouldn't be able to do that. Now, with that being said, John, if you have a student who is in a Level 1 and is advanced and is doing and wants to do work beyond, we're hoping that our teacher will differentiate instruction and provide that person with some additional work to do. So, but, again, the idea of it going on a transcript as an Honors Chemistry class, we couldn't do that. Okay. And then we're down to some of our smaller courses here. Spanish, World Language. There was a question brought up with regard to, Elaine had brought up a good question under Family Consumer Science about culinary arts being 16 and 14.
You did culinary arts, is that?
No, I was wondering, we did the kitchen over so beautifully there with the state of the art. And I said, "Only 30 kids?" And then Mike steered me to, "No, that's the nutrition food you were thinking of." The culinary arts are kids who want to go on and on in this field.
Yeah, so the.
Nothing confused.
If you look at the food, the food and nutrition and food technology, we have three sections, 22, 21, 21. So that's the, that's the low level, that's the base course. And then for those students that want to go to the next level, that's the Culinary Arts program, and we have 16 and 14. And that type of a course, I like the lower numbers, because that means more kitchen time.
Yes.
More time with the teacher.
Those kids are focused, focused, too.
And good outcomes, so.
No, and I'm glad to see that we, when we put the money into the building and put money into that kitchen, which is phenomenal.
Absolutely.
Or if you want to call it a kitchen.
That's state of the art.
It's not like my kitchen, but it's being used. That's what I, my eye went to the culinary.
State of the art, so.
Elaine, when was the last time you turned your stove on?
I know.
All right, I'll go on to the next page. Here we have Tech Ed. Again, our numbers in Tech Ed, I'd love to be able to expand. I know Student Programs and Services, you're going to hear from a couple of gentlemen from Goodwin College about, you know, what they can do to enhance what we already offer. We see some good numbers right there. And then Gym, Gym Health PE, the one number that stuck out, which one of your colleagues mentioned to me, was the. mentioned to me, was the size of four for PE 11. That is an actual, for that section, that is a morning section, and what we surmise may have happened there, it may have been more highly subscribed, and then they realized it was Period 2, and they have the ability to come in later, because it's an upper-class level, upperclassmen group. So they may have swapped out for another time later in the day. Now, with that particular section, we did project out to the spring, because this is half-year, there are 17 for the spring semester for that one, so that's that piece. And then again, the arts, well-subscribed, you know, AP Art, obviously, that's your upper-level course. There was a question also about Concert Band versus Concert and Marching Band. Those are different courses. The Concert and Marching Band has an additional .25 credit to it, so those are the kids that march and also participate in Concert Band. The Concert Band is just, Concert Band alone, not affiliated with the Marching Band. And again, Concert Choir numbers, we have quite a few. The Electronic Music Production, that is another one, with two sections, 28 involved in that. That Electronic Music program that we built through the High School Project, they love it, very, very popular. And again, these are other programs within, so our ELL program, we have 38 ELL students at the high school. We have six that are currently going to, they split their time, half between Weathersfield High School and half a day at the Greater Hartford Academy of the Arts. Our ALS program has 12, and that program is our Adaptive Living Skills program. So as those students move along, they may feed next up into our Weathersfield Transition Academy. So those would be students that would get services right up through age 21. And then last but not least is ADP, that's our Alternate Day Program, and that's a program supporting our students. In Weathersfield High School, it is a self-contained program, yet, again, as the IEP states, to the extent that they can get out with typical peers and go to mainstream classes, they're out in the mainstream environment.
Michael, could you just explain again what GHAA means, the half-day?
That's the Greater Hartford Academy of the Arts.
I got you.
So, yeah, we'll have kids that'll come in in the morning and have a half-day of course load with us at Weathersfield High School, and then they'll go to Greater Hartford Academy of the Arts for the afternoon.
Yep. Just didn't know the acronym, okay.
And then here are our class sizes. Class sizes have really been consistent at Weathersfield High School. And then you see our large numbers in Table Number 10, you know, the large numbers are where you want them, in music. And then our Transition Academy. So we currently have no out-of-district students, or all Weathersfield students. And then what we'll do over the course of this year is, we develop IEPs for our students for next year in the ALS program. We will start to transition some of those students from the ALS program, where they'll spend part of their day at the ALS program at Weathersfield High School, they'll spend the other half of the day over at the Transition Academy. And with that, that is the class size report. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
I know, I got to see, I found it. Is this your script? Yes, we're right here, we have none. Thank you. Put it in your calendar, Kevin.
Okay, thank you, Michael. So we have no scheduled Board of Ed meetings that were held, but there are many on the upcoming schedule, and I'll read those off right now. We have Community and Public Relations Committee, which has a very meaty menu, as I told you, and that's on October 10th at 6:00. Student Programming Services is on October 15th at 6:30.
Bobby, was that in our packet? I didn't see that agenda.
I think it was the first one.
The very first, okay.
Yeah.
Let's see, have a pass and look. Thank you.
Correct Council is on October 16th at 11:30. Policy and Planning is on October 21st at 6:30, and Finance and Information is right before our next board meeting on October 22nd at 6:15. Is there any unfinished business? Okay. Is there anyone wishing to come up to the podium? Please state your name and address, and may I remind you that your public comments are limited to five minutes. Okay. Are there any board comments?
I have a school update.
Oh, you're supposed to wait to the end. You're jumping the gun here.
I wasn't sure.
I'll save it for the very end, okay? All right, anyone else? All right, I do have, I want to mention two things. On Thursday, September 26th, the Weathersfield Education Foundation had its first meeting for the 2019-20 school year. The Foundation's Board continues to work to enrich and enhance our school's curriculum through private donations, working with alumni, businesses working with our schools, and through grants. The date for the annual meeting will soon be announced, and at that time, a new board, they will be elections. If you are interested, anyone, in working with this energetic group as a board member, please contact Sue Finelli or the Weathersfield Education Foundation website for more information. As I say, their board members can't be on it, all right? And the Keene Foundation continues with its incredible funding of our after-school programs. Their big fundraiser is on October 18th, 19th, and 20th, the Cove Side Carnival. Please mark your calendars for that special event, and also mark your calendars for Tuesday, October 22nd. We can't go, because it's from 6:30 to 8:30 at the Community Center, the same night as our board meeting. It's the first Keene Foundation Lights on After School Expo, but parents are invited to see and understand what's going on in the after-school programs. So as always, thank you Judy Keene and all who make this happen. And now, since we have no one else, Isaac, comments on life at the high school.
Good evening. These past weeks at WHS have been quite busy. As I mentioned last year, we had our school pep rally. The seniors came out victorious in almost all events, however, they were defeated by the teachers in the tug-of-war event. On September 30th, the senior class hosted a fundraiser at Chick-fil-A to help reduce costs for their senior activities. A new international trip has been announced, travel to Germany and Switzerland for a STEM-based educational trip. The trip is led by Ms. Shannon Bellinger, she's a math teacher at the high school. The football, in the athletic area of the school, the football team had two games. One was against Daniel Hand, where they unfortunately lost 56 to 14, but they made a return this past Friday against Farmington, 14-0. Boys soccer had four games, winning three of the four games. Girls volleyball had five games, winning three of the five games, while girls field hockey team is on a seven-game winning streak, already qualifying for playoffs. The Weathersfield High School marching band had a competition where they took first place. The school is participating in Pinktober, wearing pink shirts that can be purchased, and that money will be donated in support of breast cancer. Additionally, the school held a fall blood drive, led by Ms. Su Koko. Hundreds of students came to donate and help save lives. Finally, in the academic area of the school, we're halfway through Quarter 1. Teachers are setting goals that are not only in line with the school's goals, but as well as the district goals. This past week, Mr. Moore sent out a survey to parents in hopes to receive feedback for them, and is hoping that parents take the time to complete it for the upcoming accreditation through the New England Association of Schools and Colleges.
Oh, that was great. You did a great job.
Thank you, Isaac.
That was excellent.
Thank you.
Any questions for Isaac? He's like ESPN over there, yeah. Thank you very much. Okay, so if there's no more, any comments? May I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Some more.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Okay, any objections? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight and for watching. Good night from the board.